And we have microphones out?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. All this meeting of the goal-setting session. Commissioners for Ben. And we'll start with the ground. Dan, your chair.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner. I'm on a different meeting than everybody else. Okay.
I was able to get to it just by going into the one that's in the calendar.
That's what I just did.
Oh. Oh, well, I. From the. There it is.
County website.
Pat Mullum, Commissioner.
Rachel McInnes, County Administrator.
Board Governor, County Public Administration.
John B. Stokes. Erica Myllo, Board Reporter.
Corey, if you want to come up to the table, you might as well. That way, there is anyone attending online that can hear you as well. And are there any announcements to be made this week?
Could we announce where events are on our website? So I could find it. County Home Property Search taxes. County events, there we go. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no changes to the agenda.
No.
Yep. I will consider it approved.
As today.
Now move on into the actual of our January and May 23th goal-setting meetings. Chance to take a look at those. And directly with the English approval.
I had a couple. Small things. Quite do. Somebody's on the minutes. I'm not quite there yet. A 4.3. Eight, seven of the minutes. I think it says something about 30%. It should be at least 30% or 30% or greater. I'm remembering Rick's chart. We weren't supposed to touch 30%, but above that is is fine.
Was it under, you say, page seven? Is it this right here, approximately 30% of the time?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is something. 30% or greater.
Erica, is that something that you follow?
But yes.
Okay.
And then on page 10. There's, I think, a misspelling of somebody named Craig is in there. Should be Craig.
So I've moved to approve with those changes.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, moving on. The first topic on the agenda under four is our third and fourth quarter analytic reports for communications. Presentation by John B. Stokes and Rachel McInnes. Let's work in. What, because I don't understand why it's two pages at a time. So just to, if you're having problems seeing the screen in the room, I would definitely be going to. What page is the fourth quarter report standing? I can take a look. So if you're having a problem in the screen, please follow me. For what I've done is I'm showing them side by side. The same presentation with different numbers.
Okay.
And go over that and point, use my pointer and circle things as I can. I'm gonna have to look down. Got it. Starts on page 14 of the packet. So if you want to call. Page 14. No, quarter. Quarter three is page 14.
Yes.
Okay, so just getting started, I would like to also add that I skipped anything or need to elaborate a bit more briefly. But we're looking at is quarter three of 2023. Comparing that to quarter three of 2022, so we'll look back through. For that quarter and then quarter four, 2023 versus 22. Today, we're gonna look at some web data. We're gonna review our social media. Right over boss returns from my post with this. Look at numbers from our podcasts. Corey launched last spring. And we're gonna look at our engagement with our email subscribers.
I just want to also note that Corey is also presenting today as well.
Yep.
Okay, so one thing I just wondered, and I do have a power manager. Is through our key performance indicators, and that's how we look attractive. Our job as communicators is to get the right information to the right people at the right time, especially in the community. The other thing that we try to do with our public information unit is to highlight the great things each of our departments are doing and how we tied to 2024 brand initiative. All of that is tied within your mission to issue values. Please start. Sure. So the first thing I wanted to say about the website is when I had all this data, I checked with IP that the reports were missing. And I talked to Jen, and she said that the reason, one of the reasons that we have WordPress was because our website is so old that we could no longer track it. We have no data for quarter three or four. From the website, so looking at the next year, we should pull that. Sorry, sales, I wanted to put more information, but all three months. We're talking about social media. Each is the number of unique users that are on the content, and projects is how many times to show the attention. Engagement is another, you know, liking, posting, commenting, sharing, et cetera. And I just wanted to bring this in the works. I'm sure you've all heard the term of social media influencer, but as someone who has credibility, which is a continuing minority. Diving into our engagement, again, if you're looking at the quarter four, I'm just trying to kind of describe what the slide is showing. It is showing across our seven channels. It's comparing quarter four, 22, to quarter four of last year, 23. So, for example, if you're looking at quarter four, Facebook, we reached 103,000 people in our posts, 5,500 in our videos, 6,300 people engaged with our posts, and 300. So overall, we shared, we reached 240,000 people with our posts, 14,000 of our videos, 93,000 engaged with our posts, 750,000 people with our videos. Quarter four, 22. It's pretty close to quarter four this year, but if you look at video reach, it almost doubled. Our post engagement went down a little bit, but our video usage was almost four times as much. I also wanted to point out that whenever we're measuring ourselves against, we want to measure how we're doing against industry averages. So if you look at the slide, or the left side of the slide, it shows our engagement rates compared to industry averages. So for the example, there are been almost five type engagements on Facebooks and industry average. LinkedIn were a little bit lower just in the fourth quarter. Next, we're above, so you can see whether we're above or below. Just to make, keep in mind, this is just by a quarter, not for the over the year. And every quarter, it can take that slightly.
Can I ask a question, clarify a question? In, if you go back to slide, and you look at YouTube, Twitter's very low, X is far engagement, looks like it's really changed a lot.
They've changed their algorithm.
I know. Yeah, that's, that's a shift, right? And then also, if the board is going to switch from a Facebook interface to YouTube, you know, what's the potential runoff of, you know, loss of viewership? Because Facebook is just a, you know, a very comfort, comfortable platform for constituents.
I would actually say that YouTube is a better channel, like the number one channel in the world.
I agree.
And everybody goes there and not.
It's just the change. How, anytime we change, we really got to give a lot of leeway to our public so they can find the, the shift.
And just last year, we were sharing both platforms. I'm not sure if I was. Basically, and YouTube live.
If we decide to livestream on YouTube and not on Facebook, we can still host the meetings on Facebook after.
Okay.
And so I don't think we're having a lot of people reading the livestream. So we probably have a similar amount of reaching engagement than we just hosted after on Facebook. If we want to go that route. And I also mentioned about Twitter or X, that even though we don't have a lot of reach, it's a good social media account to keep because it tends to, when there's a crisis or emergency, folks in the past have tended to flock to that social media.
And I just wanted to point out, to your point, Rachel, if you look at quarter three data, we're actually almost three times the engagement for quarter four. So just to contact and change this over each quarter. So even though it might be lower this, over this quarter, it was way higher last quarter.
I think it would have been higher because it was colder out. More people should be out there.
Moving on just a little bit.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share a little bit about our audience. One thing to measure is our growth. And what this slide is showing is in quarter four of 22, we have 416,000 followers just that quarter. And then quarter four last year, we got 414,000, so just a few less. But overall, as of December, we have 37,879 followers across seven channels. And that's why I want to point out our fastest growing network is Nextdoor, and it continues to be. And they have, by far, the most following. You look, it's been about a growth by 2,000 this one year.
Yeah.
If you think about Nextdoor as a government agency, we're allowed to post anyone that's subscribed, so that's emergency information as well as provide updates. Also on this side, you can see Rachel, people are reaching Twitter, and they have been constantly since the new change in leadership. So it's not just our channels across the platform. So just looking a little bit at the demographics of our audience, Facebook and Instagram intended to be very similar in the fact that 37% of our followers are from Corvallis and all the way along with the sub one. 20 to 30% of them. Are in the age bracket between 35 and 44 years of age, and 70% of them are female. Of the Twitter X problems, I was not able to pull data for either quarter. We now have to pay if you want to get that data. So we're looking into possibly subscribe and see if we can get data. But they no longer offer that, unfortunately. Wanted to point out that YouTube, most of our subscribers, we have 8% that are subscribed to our channel, and most of them are Corvallis. Interesting thing about YouTube is that 92% of the people looking for our videos or watching our videos is that we're not subscribed, but they're finding us. The research engines. It's about 20 to 22% are finding us directly as a how we are. Most from the search engine to watch our videos. On Nextdoor, I'd just like to highlight the top 10 neighborhoods that follow us. Ninety of those are from Corvallis, the second highest followers are from Corvallis. So that's good. The Smuggler, oh, sorry. Spring, no. More of all than you don't, let's talk to this. All right, so LinkedIn, interesting enough, most of our followers are watching this from Portland. I would like to note that the second highest or the wrong, Arkansas. I wanted to share that I did reach out to LinkedIn about three months ago. We changed our name to Benton County, Oregon, so hopefully they block off our Facebook that says Oregon, not Park. Not just Benton County. So we did make that change, and we'll see how.
I didn't notice that. I thought that was pretty funny.
Yeah. And so in quarter three, most of our, 12% of our visitors were from advertising industries. This is kind of interesting to follow for the software and IT. And then quarter four, most of our visitors were coming from the business development and research sectors. So that's just interesting to see that. The other thing I wanted to point out about is our mentor channel, you guys may or may not be as familiar with, is our Linktree channel. Have you guys ever seen that before? I brought that up. It looks like this. And this channel came out of COVID. Because if you are an Instagram user, I'm gonna jump over to our Instagram, you're allowed to have a link in your biography up here. So we have our Linktree here, so anything that we post with a resource or a link, they can go to our Linktree account, brings them over here. And every post that we share that has a link to a resource we share on this channel. So that's. Just wanted to share that most of our followers are from Tidewater, over half. We don't have a lot, but you have some, and that's near the area of Wolf or Tidewater is the best. It may be one person who is using a lot. And these followers know that we exist because 82% of them go right toward Linktree. They know that we're there. The rest of our friends are also meeting through Instagram.
That's also a great communication tool.
Yeah, so I did something different this time. I moved the most and least viewed content to the end, so if you look at that across the platforms, by the time. Awesome. For fourth quarter, I actually had time to look at something like advertisers are social media influencers. Those are our news outlets, our radio stations, and our television stations. And I went and reviewed how many followers they have on each one of their social media accounts. And if you look at that and graph, or what we threw at this time, for example, KZI has 107,000 followers on Facebook. They have 9,200 on Instagram. They're not on LinkedIn, but they have 67,000 followers on S and 14,000 followers on YouTube. Why I bring this up and why it's important, because if you look at this slide, it shows you that between all of our influencers that follow Benton County, they have an audience of up to 414,000 on YouTube. We have 38,000 followers, and combined, they have that. And so one of those influencers for all pick up any of our content, we have that much more capability to get the information to that one people. So that's the power of social media. That can be a very powerful tool. Wanted to point that out. Next, jumping into podcasts, in quarters three, we had four at one time, we had four at that time. Our latest, so there was a podcast with our special Scott Krueger. And in our fourth quarter, we have, we've done.
Seven of them.
And episode six is not missing. We just are saving that to share out with the pair this year. So it was a special podcast. And you can see that the total downloads to date as of December 31st, with just under 700, which is actually gaining popularity if you compare it at each order. Every episode gets more downloads or additions. People know about it.
I've got a question. Is the podcast, when it's fresh, we get some viewers? Do people access it because of the content or because of the data? So that's old and all. Do something else?
Yeah, I think, I mean, a couple of ways we can get folks to tune into it is one, to notify the public when it's a, these things, people who are interested in past episodes will view it. But then, really, the other way, and this is what we need to do with our outreach in general, is identify key partners who are interested or involved with these things and really follow up with them and share the information.
Yeah, because it seems like you put a lot of effort into it in trying to figure out how to maximize the usage.
That's why we've developed that template, where we'll try to identify email lists and then circle back with links to all of those.
Thank you.
Good, the podcast as well, and also our social media. Sometimes folks do.
It's also available on our RSS channel, just our RSS channel and our list. And also posted to our website, and sure, everyone's. So just jumping into our email subscribers here. We like to see how they're engaging in. So last year, we sent out. Oh, sorry, two years ago. About 35,000 emails in quarter three. And then this month in 2022, we sent out about 46,000. So just about 10,000 less. This quarter, 22, we sent out almost 7,000. And we work for. Sorry, we sent out about 37,000. On the right side, it shows how many new subscribers are subscribing for that quarter or unsubscribing from our. And I wanted to point out, average open and click rate, which means we're clicking on the. So you can actually go into our software and see what links are clicking on, so we can find out what they're interested in, what they do not want to know about. So our average open rate's 32% in quarter four of 2023, and our engagement rate was three times higher. So I mean, are those people that are opening are engaging more than the average person likes to do that. Or engaging, they could sign up for it.
And McBee was obviously the popular item this time around.
Yeah, that was just a single email to the folks that had reservations out there, and they're letting them know that they can't find something to go.
Yeah. So I think it's important to mention that we can set up specific lists. So we have one main list that we call our email subscribers, which is around 1,000. That's where our general news updates will go, but sometimes we'll set up a list that's specific, you know, it's always process for group management.
Hey, another email software, we're using something called Rainbow, and basically we have purpose. But that's what we have special ends for, ways to handle the trouble. And so we can track that data as well. We didn't send anything out in quarter three of last year, but quarter four, we have three events, the county meeting, the celebration, the monthly celebration, appreciation. And we can also, our open rate for that is 22%. That's within small bridge. And our engagement rate is four times higher, so that people reply to those comments questions.
I'll chime in on that one, too. We've, we've also developed a key partner invited list for special events.
So this is the most exciting part. I love the fact that we can actually look at how much we're spending, seeing the return on our investments for ads. Types of ads. If we advertise those on both platforms. Jumping into our print digital, this is our total lead ask, shows the total investment of 3,500, where that money was spent again, and what types of ads we shared for each quarter. So quarter three, we were sharing. Sign up. We spent all this, keep working, bring the guy, and report ballot. Or we drive out COVID flu campaigns and form that kind of thing. Pinted, here's a couple of samples of what those looked like. We didn't get to see those.
I would just mention on this one that we do try to use our advertising budget effectively to show it down on the department. Move out the count. You guys know the guy. It's for us to get Rachel's agent.
I don't know, we had started a newsletter, but I haven't seen it in a long while. Started the, the stock again. Very stop that. Do we do any advertising down in the. Prices and junctus of the news figure down there? No.
So, so we're familiar with the Monroe publication, you have to.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have advertising, but we. Or maybe we'll ban. I think that will share information. As far as Junction City goes, I haven't even looked into that yet, but that's.
Just to add, last Friday, I was down in Monroe, and they did change ownership in the Little Monroe community sticker. So they're just getting back on their feet. I don't know if they've had a publication yet, but, you know, we might want to engage them again.
Okay.
That's different from what I'm talking about, so, yeah. And I'm just checking into the radio ads here, like at quarter four, sponsored, that means 860 times our ad on the radio in that quarter. We advertised with KTV, we have four different channels, the LCC, and HBO. So that we're trying to spread that out. Have we, I've talked to KTVR. OSU channels.
Oh, is, oh, that's okay. I'm thinking of, no, I'm thinking of Beaver General, which is part of Biocoast.
Yeah, so KBVR is the, is the student-run radio station on the X.
I think that's something that we, we need to look into. I'll add that to the. We work with the Orange Network quite a bit, but we haven't done.
I just wanted to share that we advertised the player. In the third quarter, we reached 50,000 for the $5,000 investment, and the COVID related pre-campaign. So. This is what I call. Special grant to do that for funding, funding companies that work. There's just a simple, what's the exact. Television. So in quarter four, there was 407. Ads aired on 7/60, I think that was just COVID and flu. Big break. And then we did the federal awareness. So what those would have looked like if you were watching the television and saw any of those ads. So this is the most exciting slide of all. And this ties it all together. It shows you how many people we reached on what kind of medium. This French radio social. So I want to point out, so quarter three, we reached 2 million people, quarter four, we reached 4.2 million people. So we've got. I wanted to point out here that radio has affected quite a bit because we spread the possible channels. Depending on the channel, some of them aren't able to measure actually how many were viewed. channels, and depending on the channel, some of them aren't able to measure actually how many were reaching on their base. Some of them are higher than others, because they'll go across, we're going to talk about landline and that's my best, and that's why the reach is so high. So there, it may not just be a lot of them, it's the same people who are
Yeah, I think, you know, you look at, if you listen to K O S C, and you're getting more advertising, then hear that ad twenty, thirty times, so that could contribute to viewers' listening impressions, but that's also great from a branding and impression standpoint. Resonates and
Well, and they, uh, run stories about, uh, events and activities in, in our areas, so it seems like that's a good one to keep in touch with and keep beating them.
And I was just gonna point out really quick, then, a little bit faster. Uh, it's earned media, in July, we sent out a total of six releases, and we have that many articles written just off those releases by other news networks. I don't August, we had five articles, we had even more early media. September, we wrote five. Jump over quarter four, October, we wrote ten, and we missed that one, November eleven. A lot of reading media just releasing our articles. So this is the end part, but I'm going to try to go through as fast as I can. What we're looking at here is the most viewed content on each platform, again, we have seven major channels for each. I'm just going to explain kind of what they, all that you guys go through. But you're just kind of showing, we've been looking at quarter four, the number on the left, sixty-seven, ten, is how many people saw the post, and nine hundred and nine engaged with them, so that was like our most secondly, post, that's the number that's four, four. So as you're looking at that, keep that in mind. Um, and then, and we also want to look at what was least viewed. This helps us gauge what people really aren't interested in. Um, and sometimes it's our shares for other partners, sometimes our own information, sometimes it is not on social media, or it's not, it's not important for the day. So again, um, we looked at most viewed videos, and it's and this is for every I did want to point out something else, I was at least to work with, um, gauge how we're doing compared to other councilor seminars, whether it's a state agency or another county or another local city, so this is showing us on Facebook just for quarter four, our quarter three, it looks like and it shows how many fans we have compared to other channels. So compared to O E M, they have twenty-five thousand fans, we have maybe four hundred. So it's kind of nice to see how we're measuring that, like um, this is an example of our engagement for that quarter. Again, this was the past big employee post, we had a hundred and twenty-three engagements. They had something about but they had sixty, sixty-eight percent less engagement on that, so it's just kind of showing the popular posts why, and someone else has more engagement why. This slide, I wanted to point out, I'm just going to show you one section of this from the others, is um, if you look at the far left, it shows that industry averages in government on Facebook during this quarter have one point six million impressions. And that's how, in terms of it goes across these kind of um, but we had two hundred and fifteen thousand you're not the CDC, you're not, uh, D O D, so it's just measured off every government. The local governments actually very good for a quarter. And it says audience growth rate, most other industries are losing five point seven six of their fans, while we're gaining one point five for this quarter. And then most agents getting one point six percent engagement, we're doubling that this quarter on this platform. Um, and the posting frequency shows that they're posting less than one post that they were posting on average one. Just wanted to point out with that note. Um, and then, of course, it's the same for all the other channels. I'm going to go ahead and skip through all of these, let you guys look at them, and we have a couple. And the most viewed groups, I do want to stop here. So one thing I wanted to point out about LinkedIn channel uh, was our, how we measure out some of our competitors, um, and where our growth rate is, this is showing, uh, that we're how many followers we have, how many new followers we have for the quarter. So for example, we're only under twenty-four followers, we're all in, uh, also behind a similar chain, about a hundred and thirty-six. And then, of course, uh, we have two hundred and six, a lot bigger account.
It's like that's a brand.
It's just nice to see how and then this is the engagement rating, so we're fourth highest engagement for that quarter. This is the one thing I was one thing I wanted to point out about LinkedIn was our newsletter. It's really, really popular on LinkedIn, where it has a lot of other channels, so next door, and then a lot better than the regular social channels. Um, so quarter three, even though there was only fifty-nine articles viewed, that's actually really low, we gained seventy-one new subscribers just from newsletter. And in quarter four, we have eleven hundred views, and we have fifty-five subscribers. They're trying to go through the newsletter, and this is one thing I wanted to point out. Our YouTube videos, because this is a little bit different. When you get down to this, this is seven hundred and twenty-four views of Rachel's video, but thirty-four hours.
It looked like a crazy one.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that slide. I'm just living that one for you.
Thirty-four hours of Rachel.
And it's crazy, it's not, two hundred and twenty-two, three people read the past day one and watched it for four and a half hours, so that's what that means. So in quarter four, three and four, we have, uh, close to six thousand video views a month.
Now you know why people keep saying, oh, it's weird video.
People are using it to, when I meet with them for the first time, they do a little search and they find that.
And that was, um, the presentation, sorry, I went through the end. Those slides, man, if you have to try to look at those later in the evening.
And I just want to say, well, first of all, thank you for putting this together, because I know it takes a lot of work, but I I, I mentioned this to you, I firmly believe that when you look at a public affairs program, this is best practice to have a presentation like this, because the value of a public affairs program can often be raised objectively, and also depends on um, I, I feel that it's important to invest in it, for one, and then for two, John, we mentioned it helps us.
Thank you. Are there questions for Johnny? Well, I really appreciate it. It's always fascinating for me to see which channels are being used by, you know, the gender differences, the neighborhood differences, um, and the types of information that people want on these channels, so it explains why it's important to use all of them, as you say. Um, they, they matter at different times.
Did want to share, I just finished full year, twenty-two versus twenty-three, so I didn't have a great but it would have been way too much of a
Yeah.
So I can either give that to you guys, um, just as an email, or if we come back to it later.
Okay, we'll definitely bring it up on the agenda, and if not, we can send out, looking forward to looking at it. Nice, strong heart team, nice job.
Thank you.
I had a question on the Eugene TV station, K E Z I, and, uh, it seemed like they've kind of adopted us, or, or they're the station that, um, pays attention to communities outside of Eugene and Springfield, that, is that still, uh, a good relationship?
Um, I, I would say it is a good relationship, and that is true, but I would also say that, uh, K L and K N T are good partners. So sorry for the change. K E Z I has, in the past, um, done a very good job covering that.
Well, especially that we don't have a homegrown station, it's nice to be adopted by somebody.
They, they do make it a priority to cover events, sports, and other important things that are happening.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Well, I think we'll move on, uh, to our discussion regarding renaming process for forty-one eighty-five.
Yes, so I did ask Jonny to stick around because she has the most historic knowledge of when we do rename a building. We know that, that we have the E, uh, four-one-eight-five, uh, Research Way, and it's the Children and Family Services Building, which is what we're calling it right now, but we do have opportunities to, uh, to name our buildings. Uh, we went through a long process for this particular building, and I kind of wanted to bring this up, uh, because it's moving along, we've taken ownership with it, um, paint is being painted. I took a tour with Commissioner Wise last week, uh, through, um, through the space, so of this, uh, this process, we would like to start moving forward, and I kind of wanted to go through, and I think it's good for everyone to hear what, what we, what we've done in the past, and, and is that working, and if we want to tweak the process, we are open to that, so Johnny, can we talk a little bit about that?
Uh, sure. So prior to, uh, maybe we just did on February twenty. Go back to Joe Mon, I think he was, he was just working at that time. We're not giving research to that different partners about potential names for this, and it was either a personal importance from this area and work from our area, that's what we're concentrating on. So he was in the process of naming the rooms in this building, after naming the building from that, he gathered a list of names that were used and voted on by, I believe, employees and but employees that get to vote, I think it was supposed to employees. From that list is how we presented the names for the courthouse and the DA office. That's how that yeah, yeah. Other than that, I'm sure the process of that, that as much history as I was in that, I had found all that information.
Yeah, that would be great, uh, for us, newer and community members, how it was sent.
So the names that were left over that originated from, that were gathered to name this building, we represented that to myself, Sarah and Cory. There was eleven names, and it was narrowed down to seven, because some of them would have been confusing. But I gather there was, there was those names or similar names on other offices. And Sarah, Cory and I did some research, wanted to do those, and again, they have to be some of those from the area or significant cultural, some of them weren't cultural. And from that list, we did a vote in four names, and then writing that tape to all of you in December. Um, and then we showed it out with our community, we did a poll on our next channel, which is twenty-two thousand people. We sent it out through every channel we have. You asked, I did a radio interview. So that was
I believe it was the L C C.
Was it? Okay. And, um, from that, we got just under three hundred votes, so even though we have a huge question, I'm but it was not chosen because um, but one of them was people passing by might not recognize the street or people home. I would have had to be and the fact that that's the beginning of the courthouse, and that's where the E S V is going to be. They wanted it to be easier for people to choice for this person. We tried to do other also to do two others, take the chances. Sydney, our Marshall, I know, so there, and yeah. The next one, their person. So we can go to show
Yeah, no, it might be also worth noting that we had really pretty good participation, uh, from the public voting, and the vote, I think it was either two or three votes different.
It was close. So that was the name that was chosen.
So the remaining names that we can use and possibly send out to the community
could come from the
Could come from the original eleven, was it eleven?
Well, that was, there was seven.
Seven?
We just took but some of those research was specifically done on the land around the property on Highway twenty.
Right.
Um, we're over to you in this section now.
So is, so you're talking about the road, uh, but was the, so when we did the was that, that the same type of
Yes.
So, so we came up with this, and we just
We had, uh, uh, the original list of names that we came up with for the health community, it was, uh, from employees. And it was a very long list, it was probably, I don't know thirty or forty names, and some of them were not serious at all. Not in jail. Um, uh, but there were, um, otherwise I found kind of cute, this sunset, we have already, so sunrise. There were a variety of names, and then we added to that as staff, um, uh, of several names from, um, to honor people with historical importance in the community. Um, and then that is the list that we actually had a vote, had a vote on, and, and now we haven't gotten more feedback, uh, before Commissioners chose me. So it was a multi-step process.
Interesting, and this, you know, you mentioned people from the community or, or historical figures. You know, I mean, they've already thought about this, but obviously this particularly tend to be, and particularly the support from the current Speaker of the House. Actually, under is, is, again, I don't know if that's appropriate, or
Certainly put it out there as an opportunity.
I, I had thought of something like that, but, uh, not sure it's appropriate, but, uh, one thing on the new building, uh, I would think about naming it, uh, after its function. We now have three buildings, oh, which one do I go to? Uh, I know what street they're on. Uh, and, you know, this one's obviously set, and it'd be hard to say what, to summarize the, the function, but on the on the new building, uh, I, I would toss that out, out there, that I think it might be helpful to, um, give some hint what its, uh, purpose is.
I like that, other than if we decide to change the purpose, or, because right now it's children and families that we're hoping to put more in there eventually, is that correct?
Yeah.
Right, the, the target right now would essentially be all have children and families, but see that adult population coming into that, that would just, that's, again, that could certainly change, be now and when our
It could be like behavioral, the behavioral health building, that'd be accurate.
One of the things I've been hearing in the community is people have a really mixed reaction to naming anything mental health and behavioral health. Except you want to place them up. So it's hard to know how best to go about addressing that too.
Yeah, I was thinking about the sunrise building too. Like, I remember that name and you said it. And it is, I think it is kind of nice with like, you know, oh, it's a, it's hopeful. It's a new morning, you know, sunrise. But then I wonder if people would be confused which building they're trying to get, they're trying to get to one of the buildings. Is it sunset, sunrise? I don't know.
Yeah, I had the same reaction.
You still need Google Maps to recognize it as the Children and Families Building, correct? Right? Well, but also the services that provide it, right? So, so I, I mean, I guess we have to keep that in mind because then we're just going to become the state county office.
Google Maps? I mean, did like, if you put in Calquity building, will it take us here?
Yes.
Okay.
It will, but it it should also Benton County offices as well.
I think it, I think so, yeah. I haven't done that lately. I think it does.
Are there any leaders in Oregon for behavioral health that we'd also want to throw out from statewide naming purposes of anybody really in the forefront of?
Well, you know, in terms of her advocacy in the last several years, Barbara Ross was certainly a big advocate for behavioral health. And a former county commissioner.
Anybody have strong feelings about that? Is Ms. Ross still around?
No, she passed away about a year ago.
Okay. So that that could be added to a longer list, Johnny, right?
I would like to see the list again, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you like us to reach out to the Health Department and see if they have?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Great idea.
And I mean, Commissioner Wise and I are both on the Hope Advisory Board. There may be some names that they would come up with as well, maybe.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Would ask.
The the other group to take it to would be the Mount Hope convictions, the Mount Hope first advisor.
I wonder if, you know, if we narrow it down to a couple of names or name that we're thinking of and then we ask him.
I think that's a great idea.
And ask Hope, yes.
Yeah.
Are you okay with this?
Yeah. If we have, if we have two or three names and then take it to those.
You know, eventually we'd like to do some sort of ribbon cutting, so it doesn't have to correlate with the name of the building. But it would be nice, you know, give us a little time to to do this exercise first. And make sure the paint is dry and we have employees moved into the space.
What's our date, our target date?
July one, right now. Everything so far is on schedule.
There's no tanks underground we have to worry about?
A related question. What would it take to appeal to city rename the street we're on Research Way to something else? Because there's very little research going on out here anymore. When when I tell people where we are now, people laugh, you know?
Right. It's not a tech park anymore.
No, it's not a tech park anymore. Yeah. And and even the sign that's out there at Sunset Research Park looks so raggedy.
Because they don't, I think they don't know who owns the sign and they, you have to have the ownership to take it out. And they were looking at this like five years ago and they can't figure out who owns it.
That's kind of funny.
Did they, did they form a subcommittee?
Yeah. Board.
So I'll find that list of names to start with.
Yeah, I'd also be curious to know what the top seven would be that you passed along earlier. So I think that covers that topic. We will move on to item four point three, which was just again a reflection on the county leadership policies and practices. That document is in our packets. And I think that the request was primarily to discuss the role of the chair in terms of deciding. So this came up with respect to just about participation in an event. So I don't know how deeply we want to go into that specific situation, whether we want to speak more broadly about the role. But we do have another event to speak about. We have the A C House. So it's an opportune time to make that decision when you're all three in the room rather than having to do it between meetings at the last minute because of the deadline.
So I requested that this agenda might be added to the meeting. And I think it's just good. I, you know, I felt Joe used to go over it with us, either as needed or more frequently. We just haven't got over it in a while. Not, I mean, it was, it was in there, but I didn't actually like talk about it. And so, let's see, there's a couple of things I want to talk about. So yes, one of them is, you know, this misunderstanding between one of us commissioners. You know, saying something to staff and then staff miss, you know, being misunderstanding, thinking that it's a direction. And I think since we are commissioners, the responsibility falls more heavily on us than it does on staff to make sure that we are not accidentally directing staff. And so there's some, let's see, in here, it talks about just on the page and then I moved it for the other agenda items, but in general, any commissioner should try to avoid asking any staff member for more than eight hours of work without board. So, you know, Rachel now has her feet under her and so I just thought it'd be good to this up all of us and and talk about it. And I'm good. Actually, I still think eight hours is a lot. But if everybody agrees that that is an appropriate amount of time, we can keep it eight hours.
I, if you want to add on to that, just to add on what Commissioner Wise is speaking about. You know, all of our managers are the key subject matter experts in throughout the whole county. And but they also manage teams. They manage large, they have a responsibility of managing the day-to-day business that's going on. So, you know, I just, it's about just managing expectations. So if it takes a very long time for a director to answer a fairly long email. I, my observation is, is that, you know, that's a lot of use of their time that they are not managing their team because we factor in a lot of things in this. So even though they're subject matter experts and they want to be very detailed. I think it's really important, the turnaround expectation, if a commissioner reaches out on any type of question. So they know if it's an urgent manner or it's not an urgent manager, because I'm trying to manage their workflows as well. And most of our directors are available on vacation. They drop anything for for the commissioners. Commissioners are the closest people to the people who who are here. But again, it, you know, we have a P I O office, we have a county administrator. And I just want to be able to manage their workflow a little bit better to 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 see how we're we're working on that, to know if it's part of our priorities. So that's, that's all all that I I see from my point of view, which is something we discussed weeks ago. That I just, I'm looking at, I have directors who are working fifty, sixty hours a week. And, you know, I know it's nice when you want them to come and speak at a meeting and that work. I still have to manage that request because they have families. Or is it better that the engineer goes? Or is it better that someone in April Holland Shop attends that meeting as opposed to the director all the time? So it's just spanning out a workforce that's really working hard and, you know, wants to be part of the community. But sometimes, you know, things are going on in in their lives and I, I, you know, ask for that patience.
And I, you know, ultimately staff is your, they're all your staff. They're not our staff. I know sometimes it can be, you know, easy to say, well, I can get this done quickly if I just reach out to, you know, so-and-so. I know I can get a quick answer. So Rachel, I guess, how do you feel about? You know, I come from the city council, which is a little bit different. So I've been trained to reach out to directors, you know, and not necessarily lower down staff without like the heads up to somebody. So I'm just.
I think, I think you guys have been great about copying me. I think the, I think what I love to do, we love timelines. I I would really appreciate an answer today or this can wait till Monday. Or this is something that can be addressed this month, something along those lines. So they don't feel they need to drop everything to 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 be responsive because, you know, they want to be there for you. They actually really like all of you. They love working with you. But the, like, sometimes they don't know if it's urgent or just like a little bit of like a fishing. I I kind of really want to understand the omnibus bike path issue, right? Totally understand. You want to sit down with the person who's been in charge of it, the project manager. Give them an idea of what that work, no problem. I want them to be able to go directly to the commissioners. It's just a question of workload and managing their their work. So.
So I I think all of us here have really good intentions and nobody wants to make staff feel uncomfortable or take up too much of their time. So I wonder if there's room, maybe at like a, one of the leadership meetings where the, after the electeds leave, to have a conversation with your people.
Yeah.
And just, so I guess one thing that I would like staff to know is that they don't take direction from just one of us so that we don't have misunderstandings in the future. So however, find best to.
You know, I, again, I I think it's, you know, you guys went through a period of time without a county administrator. So thank you all for kind of stepping up in that interim because I think there was a different in understanding who's reporting and who's not reporting. Most of you guys are very collaborative. You're all collaborative with me. It's just how do you put it? Sometimes they feel they need to drop everything to 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 meet you at a site, to look at something or whatever. And we just want to like manage that.
The board saying this is really important, then I think that's okay.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure that.
And and sometimes I direct, I'm sorry to interrupt, I direct the directors to go absolutely, please make appointments directly with each commissioner. And because again, they are the project manager of an initiative. So really, they of course can report up to me and I can brief you. But if you really want, you know, the full picture, you really should be meeting with your health director, the engineer, public works. You know, whoever, whatever the issue is.
On the flip side of that, I don't like someone to just put a thing on my calendar and say, we're meeting at this time and have, what, how'd this get here? So, which I've talked to staff about. So I think.
Yeah. Oh, they should give you documents ahead of time if they proactively reach out to you or if you request a meeting. You know, give them a little time to to get their ducks in a row.
Yeah, I guess I was just gonna, just for discussion sake, you know, my position is now a new position that you have not had before in the past. And part of my role is to be kind of part of the arm of Rachel to be able to help on a lot of the things that she's not able to manage. Part of what, you know, could be considered, could I, you know, help be a filter to some of this as well? Because I think it is, you know, and I think many of us are trained up that I've been in government for so long, is that elected official ask and you, and you respond. And that's just sort of the way. But at the same time, like Rachel said, we have department heads are trying to run operations and then and day-to-day stuff. So if there's a way to maybe have the best of both worlds to where, yeah, there needs to be responsiveness to our elected officials. But we also need to figure out how to, you know, vet that most. So I guess just as a suggestion in terms of how you might consider using that, could I be particularly for those departments that, you know, I will help sort of more that direct onto it. Be the Health Department, Community Development. So just for for consideration, because you have a new opportunity here.
And again, we'll get to my updates. We'll talk a little bit about transition and what Rex's direct reports will be and who will be my direct reports. And that'll help kind of clear a little pathway of where they are.
Once we clarify that, it might be a good idea to insert the new assistant kind of new sticker rule into the leadership policies.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So and I guess, so for me, I just want to make it very clear and I would like to, you know, give permission that if staff ever feels I want to know if I'm doing that sort of thing and I just want to, you know, openly give permission. Like if I, if I, if staff feels that I'm asking for too much, please feel free to push back. And I would just ask that the other commissioners, if they agree with that, would.
Absolutely.
True.
And, yeah, absolutely.
And then, so the other part of a little bit of this that I wanted to talk about was, so our current chair, this is your last year. And I know there's stuff that you want to accomplish. I don't have a good sense of what that is, but I do want to help you. I want to support you, try to get, you know, some things across the finish line, you know? So I'm interested to hear if we have time today or if they're on the top of mind, if we could chat about them.
True. No, and I think we don't have a heavy agenda. In terms of my objectives, getting as far as we can with our facilities and construction projects, definitely number one. With respect to our outside funding, thanks to Rick and the team and everyone that's been involved, really have done a great job. So that was another item on my list. In terms of more substantive work, I would very much like to see two of our advisory committees. Reorganized to a degree that they are much more functional. One is the Mental Health Development Committee, Advisory Committee. Because they do have a role with respect to the behavioral health resource network now. Tenting and I know that our behavioral health director, Damian Sands, has a provisional plan for that. So that is something I want to support on the ways on that committee. I just want to make sure that we are doing the best we can to engage those community members in a way that's appropriate. To help enrich our services and so that they're allies for us. The other is the Atlantic Criminal Justice Council, our local city coordinating council. I've been working very closely as a member of this executive committee of that body to, with Sheriff Van Arstol and with Chief Anderson, O S U, to come up with content, work strategically and then to look at the bylaws and update the founding documents for that body are old and somewhat confusing because there's an I G A out there that was attempting to create a one ninety station. F C or C S C or com and it's the organization. And yet that that seems to be the understanding of the financial aspect of it because we get dues from cities and from O S U. So there's some, given the staff turnover there. Support for that's based in the district attorney's office. The, so many moving pieces are changing in D A. It's time, it's time to pay all that. So that's, that's a little bit messy and that, but that is something I do spend a bit of time on because it affects all of the issue areas that behavioral health and law enforcement system intersection. And I'm an elected member of that executive committee, so I function as a commissioner liaison, but I also have a role on that committee. So anything that we do with respect to the bylaws and founding documents will come back to the board because that all needs work.
Okay, I think we're having a very good discussion on all of our respected boards and advisory committees. And we're going to hopefully tighten them up momentum and then we're having a transition of power, you could say, from the council's office to the Board of Commissioners. So that is some different roles and responsibilities within the small staff that that is dedicated to the B O C. So there's going to be a little training. It's going to take a little time, but I believe we're going to try to transition in by early summer.
Right. So it sounds like it's, are you saying it's good timing or?
It all, I think, coincides with one another. I think the chair has two that use specifics and then there's some that are not very active. I think the chair has two that use specifics. And then there's some that are not very active. And that was, we just created out the last meeting.
Yes. And, and I'm learning that the public health folks actually would like to revitalize a public health advisory committee, not the same one that we have right now.
Right.
Um, so we're not ready for it to go away. Um, the, it, it, yeah, the advisory committees in general has been an issue area of concern of mine for years. So I would very much like to work on all of that, but those two are the primary focus for me. Yeah. That, you know, with the short legislative session over, I, I feel like there's just, uh, the other thing that is before us is implementation of the new measure one ten thing coming out of House 2002. That is something I'm going to be paying close attention to. Um, and I, I think that it's something that bears a little more discussion. The district attorneys have kind of taken it on at one moment, but it's, I think there's going to be a bit of a tussle here because no one wants the VA's office to shake what's going on. The courts need to be involved, the bench, uh, our law enforcement, you know, the chiefs need to be involved and sheriff. Um, certainly the jail, um, and probation, uh, behavioral health for sure. Uh, but there's been kind of a pair of conversation going on between behavioral health and the DA and not involving the other people around the table. So we're gonna, that's, that's shifting a little bit, um, it has to, um, in order for us to have a robust system. So, and I think that's partly a dynamic of, um, a DA who was a short panel at this point. Various things going on. So, um, next week, we are having a, an all-day workshop hosted by the criminal justice council, uh, to engage in sequential intercept mapping. It's a process that we refer to in the criminal justice systems assessment that we never actually conducted to take a look at the intersection of behavioral health needs and community and the system, the law enforcement, justice system, uh, to identify how we are addressing the needs of folks that are just some of that have substance use disorders and mental health problems. And, and it will also include developmental adversity. The, um, that work trap is going to be held at OSU. Um, and it, it includes all of the stakeholders that are necessary. It's particularly timely and, um, reforms and, and need for deflection programs and clarifying diversion. So, um, I, I think that that's going to give us the groundwork for both for the strategic plan for the WCJC and uh, to help set the table for discussions about what kind of system we are going to set up for, um, measure one ten.
I think the whole country is watching what Oregon is going to be doing. So.
Yeah, I said, it's a very interesting time. So, um, that's all, that's all really exciting.
Okay.
Um, and then with respect to health and I work with the health, um, folks, uh, otherwise and liaison all of the community health centers, I still, uh, I want to be as supportive as I can, uh, of Lacy in terms of making sure that that board is functional. And that, um, we have a plan moving forward, uh, for the financial liability of those vital services. It was, yep. So, yep.
Coming soon.
Coming soon, April second. Um, so that's all, um, that's a chunk.
Yeah. Um, so thinking about the, the Matic and revamping that, I would be interested to know, you know, what the details of that or what we could do, what that would involve. Is it, does it involve our staff? Does it involve a lot of participation from members or community outreach or?
The, the problem is the classic of how our advisory committees function. Um, the, the committee members would have, would like to have some basic data. How many counselors do we have? How many vacancies do we have? You know, in terms of FTE, what's the wait time? Uh, how many, you know, what's client load overall? Though, and they've been asking for that for at least a year and a half that attended meetings. And we have metrics that our behavioral health folks have to track, uh, for their, um, financial agreement with state. Uh, but they are, they're not necessarily quite aligned with Matic's interests. And what, what the community members would really like is to just have a core presentation that addresses some of those basic things that they could see even if just on a quarterly basis, so that they know what's going on with the addictions, developmental adversity and mental health, uh, programs. Um, I, um, our staff is just overwhelmed. They're really, really busy. And it, I don't think they've been able to and so that's just an area we need to think about. Um, staffing, the, that committee covers addictions, mental health and developmental adversity. Those are, um, two of them are within behavioral health under Damian and then there's Jasper's piece under developmental adversity. And the staffing is not very clear. So all of the staffing really comes out of Damian's shop and then Jasper's will get tens of meetings. And so they, that those issues get short shrift. Uh, so part of what Damian has proposed is that it be three subcommittees that meet on a quarterly basis, uh, maybe as a whole on quarterly basis. And I think that that would address some of those, uh, inequity in terms of how issues are addressed. But, um, so that's a structural element. Um, but I, I think to my mind, um, staffing and expectations are the biggest uh, issue. Um, and, and just providing providing more knowledge for the community members about what we are doing, because we're not doing that systematically.
When, um, so a couple of things, when we're thinking about the public health advisory committee, which is completely different and not running in, but public health like to get it back up again. Do you think there would be any um, room to pull apart Matic and six stuff in there than which might be more appropriate or are they more separate? I just don't have a good.
They're more separate. Okay. And public health, uh, you know, that advisory committee before it disbanded was really swimming. They had no idea what they should be focusing on and they were not being well supported from a staff perspective. And, um, I had again, community members come to me saying, what, you know, uh, we're supposed to be also bringing the board as a local public health authority, but we're not doing anything. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to the staff perspective on, uh, how that, how that might be more functional. Um, it has a similar challenge and that is that public health has so many different tentacles. It reaches into lots of things. And that was part of what they were having trouble with. Where should they be focusing? And I don't think that at the time we were able, uh, from a staff perspective to give them, um, you know, focal topics to, to chew on. And unless you have two E topics, advisory committee meetings.
Yeah. Yeah. Every, you know, time is what we really have, right? So.
A lot of these advisory, this, this particular discussion as well as the other areas is, um, operations and operations. And a lot of things we talk about. And for the same thing. Okay. On this, a lot of times the departments are operationally focused, but then having the time and space to effectively manage policy discussion.
Yeah.
These various.
Yeah.
So, you know, as we start to talk about the health part of secret, probably broader than that, I think that's a, I guess a question issue. Maybe, but it's, where, where is that space? I mean, obviously you look to your directors in some cases, but again, back to operations day to day, there's that responsibility. So is there a place as we think about how we best structure ourselves to be successful? Maybe have health policy, have public safety policy as, as a framework. So you have staff that are dedicated to that. And again, I know that that's, that's not just adding new people. It's all looking at your existence.
Yes.
And see how best to mobilize. But that's something I'm interested in exploring with Rachel as we start to dive into our own informal organization. Are we set up for success to be able to do that operation really well? But also be there because that's where a lot of you want to play is the policy level is how we support.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's something we build into.
And we're doing this project in the data link. And then eventually probably someone based in the DOC, there should be some sort of chief data officer to help collectively who has that policy background, not an IT person necessarily. Someone who's that collects the data and then drives down why to our directors, why are we tracking this? Why is it important?
Yep. No. So, uh, I'll just say too, thinking, you know, assuming I'm reelected, uh, I want to have a focus more, I, you know, you will be gone. So that's some big shoes to fill in the mental health area and we'll all try to step up. But I, I'm gonna, I would like to have more of a focus on mental and behavioral health in my next term. So I think reorganizing this, um, advisory board would be a good first step to make sure that we, you know, have supports in place. So I guess I would ask or request or the other, you know, commissioners can say if they would like us to make this request or not. Can we have staff look into, um, kind of some basic information on what it would take to revamp this board?
Sure. I think it's already in process.
Okay.
Damian is.
Or maybe like a timeline.
Well, we can always bring them to a meeting. I remember, uh, last, uh, Commissioner Wise and I met yesterday and we said, we haven't seen Jasper in a while in front of the board. Like this might be something that we can put together, uh, in the, in our agenda meeting to bring them in and we can address it, uh, again.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And then another question would just be maybe getting a sense from April or staff on their public health. I kind of, I got the impression that they're interested in it, but they maybe don't have bandwidth yet. So tentative, I mean, would it, could we do it this year? Would it be next year? Would it be, you know, just kind of a?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Uh, and, uh, we had.
I think April's very well aware of it and, um, we'll see when we could, we could probably give you some sort of deadline of.
I appreciate the discussion and why our speakers. I, I thought that was timely. And again, just for the bigger picture. All of these very, very important advisors, you said, you're getting invested.
Yes.
So, so I, I agree with Rachel that with the it's also a chance for us to really cross how to be structured, always advise committees. Some of our statutory, but again, supporting those committees to be able to.
Next time. Uh, then the other advisory committees that, you know, as long as we're on that topic, that focus of the, the two historic courthouse advisory committees.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wise is more engaged with.
Figuring out, I think one only has maybe two more meetings left and then will be disbanded. So then I, yeah, the other one.
Yeah, the other one probably needs to pick up some of that. I guess. Finish its work because we'll have a rest of focus where the community supports and work, how to now take off. Next place. Okay, this is what we want to, what's our plan in terms of it's like, has a place for that, excuse me? Historic preservation.
Yes.
Team.
Yeah.
And puts up some.
I would agree. Okay.
Back to the discussion on the clinics and asking for metrics and I was going to ask Rick is the financial person, uh, I know that kind of getting a handle on, uh, the clinic's budget and are, are the two requests for information, um, similar enough that, uh, what you are developing, I assume, would that, uh, answer, um, the clinic board questions on metrics?
I don't. For the, for them, mental health, addiction, development, diversity advisory committee, I think they have very specific. Behavioral health.
Uh, I was talking about the, the clinic board.
The CHC.
The CHC board.
Yeah.
Uh, is a different beast altogether. Yeah.
But so the, oh, I was gonna say, so you, it sounds like you are aware and sort of on top of some of that stuff. It sounds like some of it's underway, but that you also would just want to do what you can to support the board as it goes on.
Yes.
So there's two parts of the there certainly needs to get a budget imbalance and some of the revenues she said. There's also productivity. Bigger than maybe I even ever imagined. That really has to be focused on and measured.
Yes.
nurtured.
Yeah.
And continually watched. And I think that's the space that the, the CHC board should and can play. Part of it is back to what we were just talking about, by supporting that group to really help them and position and well to get that because we can absolutely be much more productive and efficient within our CHC. And that is going to have a return on that investment of better financial sustainability of the unit governance committee. Help them. I think they're, they're going to, Commissioner Roger does a really good job in terms of coming in and sort of bringing that, but still that more development piece.
What I would say is that, um, the staff for the community health centers have fantastic data. They present, um, it clearly, um, and graphically uh, about productivity, um, and about the fin, and about the financial situation, although those financial reports are still not ideal.
Right.
Um, the to like see.
Stop.
The, um, and so I think it's, the information is getting clearer, um, to the board members because the, there's a requirement that fifty-one percent of board members need to be community. Need to be, uh, clients of the community health centers. There, there's always a tough dynamic in, in terms of people coming in without a clue what a board does or, you know, what this board does or what their role is and what they can really be contributing. And there is board orientation that's conducted by one of the longer serving board members and she's great. But I think that we also, they also just need, um, a little bit more training about what, what their, what their role is as a board. Vis- vis a vis us as the board commissioners, because it's a, it's a little challenging. They feel like a rubber stamp and they are not just a rubber stamp. Um, and they could be, they could be more strong engagement. And that's, that's challenging because it takes, it really takes staff time to, to get there. And, and with Lacy and interim director role, um, and others and interim roles, they're working a couple of jobs already. So, you know, we're asking a lot, but it's getting better.
So I, I guess my, what I would like to offer is along the way, if there's anything that you could think of that the county could do to support them.
Yes.
Please bring it up in our meeting. We can talk about it. I think I would, you know, I'd be happy to know that kind of stuff.
And, and, uh, I, I think that the most important thing we can do is finalize the structure for, uh, health services and, um, make sure that people are in full roles and not acting roles.
Because those individuals do not have assistants or deputies, uh, when they're not there. So they are really doing two jobs.
Yeah, they are. They're, they're playing an operational and a policy role. And it's very scary. Yeah, it's, it's, that's, that's the main thing. That's the first thing. Um, and then thinking about but how to best support them in their role of these advisory committees and boards is, is the next. So, um, and then there's one last big priority area that I didn't mention, um, and that is a waste. Uh, yeah. And, uh, I very much want to see the, uh, sustain materials entry task force, uh, launched as successfully as possible and working, um, effectively. And, um, and in, continue to improve their relationship, uh, with public services in from this transparency and timely information sharing. They are getting better. Um, Reverend Phil asked for a conversation with leadership of the public, um, and the we, we're getting with that little group has gotten a couple of reports. It's not been anything that we have done. The most part, but we're getting more timely reports about when there are inspections out at the computer. OSHA was there last week, for instance. So, you know, though, that is something that I want to make sure we, um, keep moving.
Yeah.
Much clearer channels of transfer, of communication.
Yeah, I definitely support that. I, um, and in my next term, I hope to focus on some of the other recommendations from the tox trash work group plan. Um, so, yeah, excited about that stuff. So let's see. So let's see, the facilities, we're, we're working on that. You mentioned the outside funding, that's been great. The, so the implementation of new measure one-ten and the sequential intersection mapping, those sound like, um, partner, like a lot of different partners. So I'm curious, what's the role of the county in those? Like what, or the role of the Board of Commissioners or?
Yeah, I, that's one where I've been playing a role as a member of WCJC. And in my leadership role on that committee, uh, but also just because of the interest.
Sure.
And my time in this. The county has a, a role because we will approve whatever new bylaws put forth to the WCJC. I would hope that any strategic plan for the criminal justice council will be presented to the board commissioners. And for discussion before it's, you know. It is the WCJC's role to approve it, the membership. Um, I think that's appropriate.
So I guess I'm trying to get a sense if there's any resources that they need from the county.
That, well, in the near term, one of the challenges is that the staff person who supports the WCJC took a job at OSU and, um, there was a, a limited duration hire made by DA's office, but it was a sixty-day hire. And, um, that's run out. And, uh, what we've decided is that the full, um, committee is not going to meet. The executive committee decided, um, that the full committee is not going to meet in April or May, well, might be in May. According to the bylaws and the typical process, that's May is when the slate of new officers is presented in June, they're voted on. So, we're, we're, we're not sure what's gonna happen there. But there's a gap. The, they've reorganized the position of, in the district attorney's office and it's part of a new executive assistant role, um, executive assistant to district attorney. It folds in a lot of what Renee Hamel's been doing, but also what Jody Robinson is doing, so WCJC. And it, they're not likely to have that person on board in a timely fashion. So the only meetings that's still happening in this, April, and most likely in May are of the executive committee. And, uh, so, uh, with Rachel's approval, but not in appropriate, uh, I didn't do it in the right order. Mariah is gonna step in and help just support that executive committee meeting for the next couple of months, which is typically is a half hour meeting, up to an hour, uh, just to, uh, make sure that we can continue moving ahead with the results of the sequential intercept mapping and move towards a strategic plan. Our executive committee is meeting tomorrow, um, and, uh, we will have no staff. But, um, we'll record the meeting and move forward, uh, so, because we need to keep things, keep the momentum going. It's, it's an awkward time.
Okay. So I know Pat, I've done a lot of talking. Uh, do you have any concerns or anything you wanna add? Anything that, you know, support for what we've talked about or what we've asked staff for or not?
Well, I think early in the conversation it was, um, kind of be, be mindful of, uh, if I ask this, uh, is this a five-minute job, a five-hour job? And, uh, sometimes we don't know. And that should be, uh, part of the conversation. And I, I generally try to indicate level of urgency and most of the time it's not that urgent. I, I would like to know something, but, uh, I think that's important to not leave it up to the staff person to interpret level of urgency. There may be an assumption that it is urgent when it's not and, and everybody has to prioritize what they do on any given day. And, uh, if something can wait, then that's, that makes us more, more efficient. Um, and you, you mentioned, uh, the eight-hour, that does seem, um, that's all of somebody's day, um, before you trigger wider discussion. I, I think that probably should be a lower number and it's an estimate anyway. So I, I think that, that's worth, uh, some discussion. An hour seems like a long.
That's kinda what I was thinking, but I mean, but then if it's, if it takes three staff people and they each spend thirty minutes on it, I mean, yeah, I just, I don't know, Rachel, do you think you could ask staff if they have any recommendations or whatever you feel is appropriate?
Bring it up to leadership when, uh, and I think, you know, that's anything from, I really would like, um, someone to attend a community meeting over in this section of town. Like I consider that an eight-hour day. If, you know, like if you're asking, you know, someone to attend on your behalf, just be, you know, so they, that we know. So I mean, I think we also have to say like, but what type of like response are you looking for, um, which would probably help you guys with some direction? Asking them to attend a meeting is, um, I think, uh, is something that, that we need to know if we're managing that person's time, uh, and if they're the best person to, to go to it. So, um, I think if you want, um, you know, something really, a deep dive, we see Vance doing it. I mean, Vance is your employee, you can do whatever you want. But sometimes it does take research and time where he gives a very, very long response. That's different. He's your counsel. So, um, I just say just lean on us and we'll divide and conquer to get you the information you need as fast as you can. But yeah, I think that they do not understand what's urgent and what's not urgent. And, um, so I just need to, um, to be mindful of that, especially those who are in, um, acting roles because they are doing more, they're wearing a ton of hats and it's hard to be thoughtful, especially when it comes to policy, I would say. Cause you really do need to take a moment back and, and, and think about your responses. Um, so that's, that's all. Just lean on Rick and I. Yeah.
It's challenging. The last thing I pointed out is the page one-eight-five of the Leadership Policies and Practices, uh, under the Board Code of Conduct. Section five point one point four is words and conditions. That language was taken directly from the La Plata County Colorado, um, version of the decision policies, because that's where it all worked, or it came here. Um, and there's a reference there to board commission appointments still being made in accordance with Benton County policy one-eight-nine. We don't have any such policy. That is, that refers to the policy in La Plata County, Colorado. Mora discovered that after looking all over the place for such a policy.
Yeah.
We don't remember our policies that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, that'd be something.
Five point one four.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
So, um, we don't have any kind of a policy about appointment to boards and commissioners at this point in time, as we are reorganizing how we deal with boards and commissioners. May one.
Yeah, I think we can clean up.
Oh, yeah. But a, at the very least, that probably needs to be omitted or updated.
Yeah.
So, uh, when Mora discovered that, just, we both just.
Left.
Laughed.
Yeah.
And, and this issue of code of conduct and ethics came up, uh, for Mora because she was looking all over the place where we were looking. As we've been looking at the DSEC bylaws and it refers to code of conduct and we don't have a code of conduct anywhere else. We don't have it on the B. We don't have it, you know, uh, we just don't have a Benton County Code of Conduct. So, uh, I was not wanting to put, um, a, a reference to a Benton County Code of Conduct into bylaws if we don't have such. And this is the only place where we have it. So that's just another open question. This document is narrow and focused and do we need a broader?
Look on that.
I, I don't know. It's, it's an HR question too. So, and similarly with respect to the, the whistleblower, um, content, the tail end of that proposed draft by laws right now. We don't have a whistleblower policy.
Does, does the state of Oregon have one that applies to us?
I, I don't think so. I think that, and I think it's usually very specific to an organization because it refers to who you work to, you know, who you, who, who is, and, and what your, what your rights are as a whistleblower. And yes, I'm sure there's state law that governments know that, but, uh, it tends in HR policy. And I know that our, you know, it, our, our policy then is being revamped with external consultants, so.
We did. Uh, so the whistleblower policy covers contractors who are contracting with Benton County.
But not employees.
And, no, employees are protected.
Okay.
Employees are, but, you know, these are volunteer board members.
Yeah.
So, um, it's one, it, one constituent, um, who has been given the whistleblower policies, um, in the March of twenty-twenty-three. Um, the same documents were shared with her, uh, yesterday as well. Um, they have not changed. But if, if that's something that you guys wanna tackle, that board member should have, uh, some sort of whistleblower protection, we can certainly look at it, but I think that's something we should talk to council about.
Yeah, I think so too. Uh, and I don't know that it's appropriate to have in wilds, you know, i- i- if it's not, kind of, probably too. So it's just a topic that has been a little perplexing. I've been wanting to, um, not have anything in any of our advisory committee bylaws and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And.
Thank you.
Good. I'm ready for a break if you want.
Okay. So we can take a, a five-minute break. We can come back for administrative updates and.
No.
We don't have any.
No.
From our break, then we are moving up with county administrative updates.
Thank you. So it's gonna start off today by, um, most of you know this, but it's, I always like to repeat myself, so we're all aware, there's some new leadership roles. Uh, as you know, Rick Craig is the Assistant County Administrator effective on March seventh. We're really happy about it. I think it's, um, the leadership team has been pretty excited about this. And we're really looking forward to talking to you and as well, uh, coming to you and kinda talking about what, uh, Rick and my portfolio will look like moving forward with responsibilities. But in general, um, you know, I feel that we feel very closely is what I know is what Rick knows. So, um, which is it really, um, exciting for me and I'm really looking forward to working with them these next couple of years. Um, also Debbie Sessions. Debbie Sessions has been with us for a very long time. She is stepping up as the interim CFO. And, um, as you might have known too, the, uh, major shift also is Jesse Ott is our interim director of NAEP and we're also super excited for Jesse to come on board as well. I feel really comfortable with all the folks in this position and I think the county is gonna be in good shape moving forward. Some specific projects that, uh, and activities that, uh, we are working on and could be up for some discussion today. Is one is our enterprise permit system that, uh, we, uh, you had budgeted for last, um, term for the budget. And that is something that's gonna hopefully work across lines. It's been talked about probably for eight, nine years. To help everybody from NAEP, from making a campground reservation, right, to all the needs and community development for permitting, uh, really getting, uh, environmental facilities, public works, being able to have a platform that they can all talk to one another, but more importantly for the, uh, community member to be able to see in real time where their permit is, um, where they're in compliance and, and really having that, that, that tool in place that I believe has been talked about for, uh, close to eight to ten years as a, as a goal. It was budgeted within the VOC because we really want this to be a team effort, not just customized for one department, um, for the rest. So pretty ambitious. We're getting excited about that. That is, uh, right on Rick's, uh, project list, as you know. The other, um, piece that's just about ready to go is an RP for EDI assessment. We have a few folks working on this, but in general, you know, we, we are talking to lots of different folks about what we need. What, the big issue is with the present job description in Benton County is it's too big of a job for one person. It's really ambitious. I'll be happy to share with you the Benton County description for the EDI. I, I don't know anybody who could do all these pieces. Um, it's just, it's enormous. Um, it, it's greater good, it's greater need. So, so questions that you are welcome to give me feedback on to help us is, so we have budget for one staff member, but what are gonna be the highest priorities of roles, responsibilities and outcomes for, so for example, the EDI coordinator was in charge of language access, really, really important. But at this point, do we need, uh, an EDI person who's also been policy, working on the finite details of, of that? They need to be part of a team, but do they have to run the program? Finding that actual purpose and need, uh, this person right now is everything to everyone.
Yeah.
And it needs to be more systemic, um, and it's just, there's a lot of buckets. So, um, it, it was described to me in a briefing was, is it the hearts and minds of staff versus policy? So we kinda have to do both, but the roles and expectations need to be very clear. What's the role? And make sure everyone knows about it. So the key to all this is, is we need strong underlying support before we can move this forward. And we have to understand that it's not one person and that's why we're doing the assessment. To build that capacity and understanding, not only from our staff, but perspective to people's current job. So, um, that's what we're looking at. So we're in our RFP in language. We have talked to Portland. Portland has like ten people in their EDI department. Of course, it's the city of Portland. It's huge. They're intertwined in every single department. They have, they're changing things in their charter, so that, that team is super excited. They're gonna be more at the table for decision-making. Um, so they, they've been, um, a really good partner as well. Do you have a question?
Oh, I was just gonna ask for clarification on the scope of the assessment. Is it, are we, or is it just what's best practice? What are our options or is it?
What does this organization need? Where are the gaps? Um, where do they need to be? One thing is, is that, um, how confidential should this individual be? So that's a question of whether or not, uh, you know, where do they, where can they be placed to be the most effective? I see a lot of needs in, uh, human resources, for example, but then we also have that public facing piece as well. So th- those are things that we need to understand from a workforce perspective, but then also what, what does the community want? And how we're going to embed that into our practices, our best practices.
So one thing that's occurred to me was, I don't know if there even is this, but are there, are there consultation companies that we can work with? And, you know, something like, something like that might be better, just so that we have more access to abroad or.
That's what we're planning on doing, putting out a request for proposals and getting bids for, for that kind of assessment. And if, if you recall, the Council of Governments and Community Services Consortium had, um, an assessment done, uh, by, um, an outside firm. Uh, and that's what, uh, and they're still working with that firm, putting together their plan for equity, diversity and inclusion. It's quite HR-heavy, but it also has other, um, it definitely has community components in terms of how you deal with your constituents, uh, in an equitable way. Because there are certain processes that are barriers to some communities. So that, that assessment i- i- piece is part of.
So the assess, so the RP is for the assessment.
Yes.
The assessment could say, maybe you should just get a.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that's, that's what's kinda picking up on. Help us determine what is the best way to, uh, approach this because systematic change within equity and raising equity, it has, it's not one person like, so it's gonna, you know, be able to make all this
Yeah.
invested training, changing our culture and maybe approaching. That might be better served with a contract or a training that we bring in. So I think that's why this assessment will open for us. So I think that's why this assessment will open for us, you know, in the direction. But I do, and I think you see this across organizations, you put one person in charge of equity and diversity. And you expect all the world to change. And it's just, it's an impossible job.
Yeah.
And it takes all of us to really kind of embrace it.
And I'm also bearing this on my past experience with working with DEI or EDI folks that I'm only getting so many years out of that position. Some, when they leave, I've had attorneys in this position, which I think has been super, super helpful, especially when you wanna rewrite a personnel handbook. For example, because we talked about wanting to update our procedures and projects and that is nice to have someone who has that legal background. What we can do, what we can't. And then there's just the, the other issues. So I've seen it, I've seen it in different variations. I've also talked to the DEI folks at the university, over at the community college, and they have had similar struggles with holding on to that individual in their growth and where, where do they fit in? And, you know, our last EDI coordinator was part of hiring, was part of policy, did a lot of the work, but also had to write meaningful messages for days of the year that we wanted, you know, our workforce to know that we honored and that, that was important as well. It is a struggle to hire to diversity. I will tell you, after just a long recruitment. I did not have a very diverse recruitment pool to interview. It's unfortunate. Some of it is our equity laws that are in the state that really don't give us those opportunities. And if we want to be a workforce that is as diverse as our community is. We have to kind of push the needle of how that's, that's, that can work. So I'm, I'm really excited about it. So we're hoping to get that out by the end of next Friday. So, so those are the two big projects right now. And then I was gonna just quickly go through some recent county activities. And no, I've met with some of your city court judges. I always participate in the new employee orientation, which I frankly, I love. I think it's really a great way to meet people and then I'm really seeing who are the new, the new folks. And I know all of you also participate in that commissioner wise, and some of our staff went over to our new building. I do need to get the chair over there. I know Commissioner Malone has already had a tour, so he says it's good.
Thanks, Rick.
So we just gotta get the sign off for our chair. Paul's doing wonderful tours. It's, it's gonna be a nice space. I wouldn't agree. I attended the sustainability event at the university.
Oh, you found parking, huh?
I did. I was a little late, but I also went over to another women's leadership group over in the Albany section, which was a lot of Lynn County women leaders, which was terrific. And it is run by like the Benton and Lynn County Community College Director. So it's a nice group as well. And that was actually in North Albany, so I was in Benton County. I recorded a podcast on Friday, hiking with Dan Crowell, so that'll, I am the featured next podcast. We got stuck up in the mountain a little bit in snow, so that'll be.
On party speak?
Yes, so we had to roll down the mountain, I'll look backwards for a couple of miles, and he did push my car. Just since the February goal setting, as you know, to, I met with Allison with Crowell State Ten Drop-In Center. I completed whole new member orientation. I met with the exec director of the jails and just the support center and had a meeting with Zan Ogierow from our connections in Washington DC. That looks kind of, kind of promising. We're moving it forward with conversations with the sheriff. Looking at another assessment, would you say, or it's more of a, it's an interesting project. It's kind of.
There's potential from the NIC, National Institute on Corrections, which is part of the Bureau of Justice Administration, part of Department of Justice. That they have to do a lot of technical assistance. And one of the things that they do is consult on jail issues. And they, it's free. All we need to do is put in a technical assistance request. So we have, Mariah is looking for a date to meet with the technical assistance coordinator back in DC. And sheriff and Rachel and me to talk about what that technical assistance might look like. And what, when the best timing would be to, to launch it. Part of my concern is that if we do another round of assessment with community engagement or not. No, part of my concern is that if we do another round of technical assessment, it has to have community engagement. And if, if the timing is of importance, because if we do it now and yet we don't do anything with respect to a new correctional facility campaign or project for another two or three years, it's, people are gonna have forgotten about it. And so it may well be that we want to use this resource because Nick is great and they've got great teams of people. I've heard only fantastic things about them, but the timing may be all wrong. So we just have.
Nick, you mean the National Institute on Corrections?
Yeah, yeah, not a person. Yeah. So, but that's the purpose for talking to.
They've had some success, you know, they were able to help get the funding together and help us, you know, make the right argument to a, they built a local jail in Colorado.
Yeah.
I think which was, it was kind of hopeful.
Yeah, they, they've worked with, with, with facilities all, all across the country. Yeah, this is, this is their purpose. So I think that taking advantage of these kinds of resources is a good idea. They also have a sheriff's academy and, but it is also a free resource.
Yeah.
Sheriff is potentially interested in, yeah.
Is that for the sheriff or is that the sheriff's department?
Only the sheriff or it's the sheriff.
It has to be the sheriff. I met with the LC school superintendent, like you also did, traveled to Monroe and I met with the city manager, Steve, and the mayor. I saw all things in Monroe, including their water treatment center. Really, really great community. And that's why I also met the new newspaper editor. So they've got a lot of heart down there. And, and then I have professional organization activities. I attend the National Association of County Administrators Meeting. They have meetings online. Something for upcoming, just for scheduling purposes. When I took this job, it was encouraged that I take the ICMA certification program. It is a lot of time, just so you know. So on my first class started on Thursday, I missed it because I had too many meetings and I didn't have an assistant county administrator at the time. So it's called, it's a modernization budgeting class. That's my first class. So that is a, a big chunk of time on Thursday. So if you see a block on my calendar, you know, I'll just be in Zoom land. I also attended the O C summit on measure 110 reforms implementation. More National Association of County Administrator meetings. And just for a reminder, I will be doing remote from March 18th. Rick Crager is the designated acting county administrator, March 16th to the 23rd, and those are my updates.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Rachel about any of those updates?
This is probably a conversation for another day, but sometimes I think it'd be interesting to hear your experience with hiring diversity in Albany, New York versus here.
I, I do, I'm gonna be really blunt. The equity laws are not.
Pay equity.
Pay equity laws are, well, no, just the actual how a resume is reviewed or an application. We, we do emphasize it's, it's experience in education many times. And those who are identified diverse or frankly, gender, take time off to either raise their families or it takes longer to get a degree. It takes longer to get those great internships and those experiences. This does not work with our hiring and how our job descriptions are written. It does not bolster a, a path forward to get to someone who may be a little less experienced. You know, graduated with their bachelor's at age 30. It's just very, very difficult. And it's something that now, now that Rick's on board, I, I really want to look and see if we can put together. And Tracy is very on board, is a sort of a hiring committee of folks who are at least reviewing our resumes and our applications with that lens and to see if we can, we can see changes. It's gonna take time. It's gonna be, have to be measured. What did you say? Measured and nurtured. That's your word. Because I just, I feel like I really want to get into that process to see if we can get there. But yes, right now, you know, they are individuals that I, I can't even get to, who I encourage to apply for jobs because they don't meet some criteria. For example, I'm just gonna use you as an example.
Right.
You don't qualify to be the county administrator right now, correct? Because you, under the, because he not, he comes with state government experience, not local government experience. And we talked about it. And it's just something, you know, that Suzanne, roots are acting, same thing, not qualified. These are stellar public servants that have, have a viewpoint into organizational management in this organization that is invaluable. And right now, that doesn't see it. I think in the city of Albany, in my experience, we wrote job descriptions to fit historically, the person who was in that position. So it's natural that we do that. We're like, well, must have this and must have this. It was so down to the finite details that when that person went to retire, they, it was a ridiculous job description.
Yeah.
Right, right down to skill sets. You know, it had like zones and must know like, must know Windows 97, you know, it was like that, that's right. Because, and that's, that's a job in itself, is to look at all of our job descriptions and, and either broaden them or make an issue. But at the end of the day, it's, it is filled through the lens of just a few individuals of how it's being interpreted. So I think a higher, like some sort of hiring committee is something that I think we could look at, like towards the end of the year of how we're looking at things. So.
It's the minimum qualifications and, and in the way we frame them.
Yeah.
And, and then we may mean one thing, but the way that those minimum qualifications are interpreted in the HR office may be even more stringent in order to have a really clear, bright line. And so we end up screening out lots of people.
Right. And, and so especially in local government, sometimes we over, we over customize the job description to benefit the individual who's in that position. And I think that's definitely was the practice there. The difference between New York and here is we have, we're governed by civil service, which they're tested positions. And then once you're tested into that position, that's your position unless we would retitle the position. That makes sense. But I will say those tests, many times someone would take it and say, it's a project manager test and there wasn't one question on project management. As far as they were concerned. So, you know, it's more like basic skills. So that's not a perfect system as well.
No.
But I, I do think that there is room for, I would like to see reform on the state level. That's something that, that they need to start addressing if they want, if they're serious about EDI.
I think this can be, in terms of just legislative flexibility in relation to the pay equity laws. I think from a standpoint of its intent, I don't think there's an argument about, you know, what it was meant to provide. I think it's in the actual implementation.
Yes.
To your point about how do you write certain things in terms of qualifications. So the law seems to have been very, very narrow in terms of what you're doing. And so is it broadening? I don't think that was taken out during this last session. It's probably something they have pumped to the big session. But that might be an opportunity as we think about how do we advocate support or be a pay support.
And this is an Benton County issue. This is something that all the county administrators are challenged by. Challenge, but it, it's definitely not getting us commissioner wise to a diverse workforce right now. It is a huge barrier.
Thank you.
Or we have great, much greater diversity at entry level positions and then it just filters out as.
And then we have the level of no one, you can't, you have to leave to manage people and then you can come back to the organization, then you qualify for it.
Yep.
So there's no, it's very hard opportunity to move someone up to a management position. You agree? Because they haven't managed a person. And I think like, we have to find some flexibility to, to get that next generation up, who, who may want a 20-year career in Benton County. And that's totally possible, like in the sheriff's office, because that's a kind of a paramilitary organization. You kind of see your, your way up through to management.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that throughout the workforce, those opportunities.
Well, I, I appreciate this discussion because it's bothered me in some of this. Maybe Joe and some of it may be our policies, but I remember when Adam Lord was being promoted internally to director, Joe, maybe Adam didn't have a college degree or, and Joe was, okay, you can have the job, but you've gotta do something about this degree. Apparently Joe softened in his old age and require, required some training, but not the, not the degree. And then a year ago for the deep director and Jesse Ott put his name in and Joe said something about, well, he's definitely not qualified for being director and really he's really not even qualified for his current position because of lack of hours.
On paper versus our, our very stringent minimum qualifications, but we know, you know, he's been doing the job, so.
Yeah, I, I guess I've, I value experience, especially in Alice where we can observe and, and and it just seemed, and I don't know, I know some of it was Joe and so, but those are maybe over stringent qualifications that we can't afford to lose people, lose good people because, oh, oh yeah, you can do the job, but you're, you're not on paper. It doesn't look good.
Or the other argument says it's great when someone has three degrees, postgraduate degrees, but does that make them a better, make them a more effective manager?
No.
The leader in, in general, that they may, you know, have, you know, a handful of law degrees and, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they are any stronger of a leader.
Small Woodlands made a decision like that for their executive director a year ago and looked good on paper and lasted two months. And then went for somebody to do the job.
So it, it's developing. I'm, I'm really committed to it. When you guys interviewed me for this job, you know, it's a huge commitment to me. I like a lot of different perspectives around the table. I learn from people intergenerationally, different backgrounds. It helps frame all of our decision making. And we just have to find a way forward and kind of push back on this. So I'm really, I think it's something that now, now that we have Rick in charge, we're really gonna be able to start having serious conversations of how we're gonna recruit and then also retain diversity. The other side of diversity that happened in my last organization that I worked at is we could hire diversity, we were not retaining them. So there was something that somehow we were not meeting our goals as being a welcoming workforce. So they didn't stay and they felt tokenized. And so that, that's some of the work too, is we may get all of our goals and we, we, we can hire diversity. How do you retain diversity? That's the second piece.
You know, I was just reading something the other day about, I'm trying to remember, it's called like code shifting or something? And how it just gets tiring.
Yes.
You know, be a little bit different than everybody else and trying to stay. Yeah, anyway, that's a conversation.
So, so being that welcoming workforce of choice, there's a, there's a, that's gonna be the continued theme over the next year. We're gonna try to compensate folks more over this year, which is gonna be great, but that's only one piece of why we come to work every day. There's, there's gotta be meaningful ways and a lot of team building and that's gonna be extra work on our directors too, because. extra work on our directors too, because they have to be the leaders of those groups. And some of our leaders are doing a great job and then others aren't. And um, those are a lot of the one on ones that I do have with my, um, with our directors now. Is, you know, how I think on the cover of Harvard Business Review, someone sent me, it says, we have an exhausted workforce. And like, how do you lead through an exhausted workforce? We've gotten through the pandemic. We've gotten through telework, bringing some folks back in and still people are not um, necessarily happy. So you know, does that mean three month evaluations as opposed to six month evaluation? Well, that's a lot of work, right? But at the same time, how are we continuing to feel like they are progressing in their career and they have that live work balance that they're, they're looking for? You know, because this, a lot of these jobs are, are hard, are hard jobs.
Challenging jobs.
Yes.
Not hard, but challenging.
Yep.
Okay, who would like to um, share next?
I have a couple of things. I'm just going to give an update that the Economic Development Coalition is meeting again and Christopher, the new Economic Development Manager is putting together their new or updated economic development plan. So.
And thank you for that. I, that's actually one of the notes I have written here is that the Economic Development Office Strategic Plan has been something that they've usually um, shared with us um, as well, because we are a funder of that.
Yes.
Um, so I'm very much looking forward to um, hearing from our Economic Development
Yeah.
Office uh, about what they view as the priorities. I, I know Christopher mentioned presenting it to us when he was last here in January. So.
And I wonder if it might be worth having some of our staff chat with Christopher at some point. You know, as a liaison, I can talk at the meetings. Um, but it just.
You're supposed to report up to me. So.
So having, yeah, just a, you know.
I'll start with just.
Yeah. And uh, not that I think anything is going astray, just that uh, like you mentioned, we, we pay money.
Well, I can tell you that uh, that between Kate Portia's leadership and Christopher Jacobs' leadership, there's a significant difference in emphasis um, already. Um, and it, we have not had any opportunity to review that and to chime in. So I'm curious, I, I want to see it in writing. Um, I can also say that from a staff perspective, Sean McGuire uh, met pretty regularly with Kate Portia um, about economic development uh, issues and on um, thriving communities twenty forty and how that informs the county's interest in economic development. Um, and so perhaps that's another opportunity to have some
And he, he generally watches the meetings, I think, or like he either goes and sits in the, you know, or he watches online. Um, but I've heard him say, you know, well, I'm just staff and I'm not on the board and whatever. So maybe we could empower, you, you know, the county administrator, reach out to him and say, hey, if you think, if you have any suggestions, let, let you know, and then you can do with it what you want.
I, I think part of what's happened too is that with the reorganization of the city and with the Economic Development Office now in community development, they're, you know, Christopher's a couple of layers down uh, from um, that more of a policy role. Kate Portia reported directly to Mark Shepherd and she had a much stronger policy role. So uh, I am just a little bit uncomfortable about our contribution to the Economic Development Office, given Port's situated and that we haven't had a chance to see into their plans um, in quite a while.
I guess I would just add to this. I think that, I think this is an important conversation. It's a little bit back to what we're talking about advisor boards. Because my experience as your financial officer is that where we have these sort of large, very large investments of powers that are going to organizations to administer a function for us on our path. So this will be, you know, you hire staff to do it or you contract it out. But what has happened is those, we often call those investments non-departmental. What that means is it sort of landed in financial offices, which we to manage, but from it was being managed more from the
Contract.
Sure, sure that the payments are made.
Yeah.
And so it really fell on the commissioners that had to sort of be that. And that's, there's nothing wrong with that, but you need to have, I think, more of a face and connection.
Yep.
Kate was great because she was very proactive.
There's nobody like Kate, you know, she's.
She was always, that's something against Christopher. Structure, but we are making a significant investment in economic development and we need to be able to influence both policies and those practices. So it, again, this could be as, as we talk more of virtual opportunities, how do we staff that maybe more effectively? Is that something I know we don't have necessarily economic about area, but somewhere with veteran services, what we chose to do is to put it within the at least you have some oversight to that. Again, I just go back to these are big investments because we're alone, we're talking, you know. What is our return? What is our influence on?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. I know at some point, I can't remember if it was when Joe was leaving or sometime in the interim period. Um, you know, the, that Economic Development Manager position was open for quite a while. I remember thinking, like.
Most of last year.
Yeah, yeah.
And Kate left in December and Christopher September.
September, yeah. So.
He started like a couple of weeks before I did.
Yeah. Um, and I understand all the reasons why. Um, but yeah, I just, I was wondering like, is there a better structure with? Is, you know, what's the possibility of economic development being put into the county and going back at the city? But you know, that's not really my place to negotiate that stuff. We've had a big time of change. So.
We, we did renegotiate all of that stuff. The first year I was in office.
Okay.
Um, so that was the last big reorganization that we did. Um, and we, as commissioners, were pretty unhappy with um, the um, service we were getting for the investment that we were making in the, in the Joint Economic Development Office. And when Kate came in, uh, things really changed.
Yeah.
And uh, we had a much uh, stronger hand in helping shape uh, the approach and priorities. Um, and what I'm seeing is it's kind of slipping back the other way. And so we just need to, uh, we need to ask for it.
Yeah. And I, I did hear Chris, Christopher call out yesterday that he is very interested in specifically supporting Philomena, the Dare Village and Row. And that made me happy to hear.
That's good.
I can also bring this up to like city manager meetings that we have to see if they've met Chris.
Um, yeah, yeah, I think, yeah.
I think he's reached out to all of them.
I think so, but you know, doesn't hurt to
Yeah.
Get solicit their input or feedback.
Yeah.
Looking at all those different types of resources and staffing models and contracting model. But how did we really, are, are you getting your economic development goals?
Yes.
And that, that's really the first one. We'll start in there. What is the most effective?
I would, you know, I, I just, I, I feel good about letting Christopher kind of get going and, you know, get his trajectory and all, and all that. So, and I, I think, I think ultimately it is good, the restructure under community development, I think, but we'll see as time goes on. Uh, oh, I was just going to say HRC Historic Resources Commission uh, is working on planning historic preservation month and like they want to have a focus beyond that as well. Um, but they're still haven't worked out most of the details. It's still sort of a concept. So, but they are working on it.
And that's May.
Yep. May is historic, historic preservation month. So um, they'll probably share with us, you know, some events or something. So.
Last year, there was a pretty extensive calendar events in May.
Yeah. I think that's all I have for now. I'm sure there's a million things I'm forgetting, but you know.
Commissioner Malone, you're next.
Got to a couple AOC committee meetings last Friday.
You've been busy, aren't you, AOC lately?
Well, legislature's in session and so they, they need to be. It, it tapers off, but um, uh, about three hundred and ninety million uh, in the governor's Senate bill fifteen thirty seven, uh, housing previous aspects of housing and not quite sure how Benton County um, fits in.
I think, I think there are going to be lots of opportunities here. So, you know, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but to the service side, you're always seeing, I think it's very clear that it was housing side of the sticks and bricks, but also service money would be coming in this bill pass. So I think we're going to probably see more information from how mostly housing communities services on how that's going to apply. But as you all know, we've already gotten, we have another million dollars from the previous session on top of what we've seen. I gotta believe they're going to see some bill opportunities. Now we're probably even better positioned with our concept around this people and it's all happening.
Yep.
And how do we track that or?
One of these, we've got good connections with housing services. So as they start to write their administrative, they have to write administrative rules. We'll get more information from the Tennessee side on this. So usually takes a few months to get kind of everything organized from all the bills and see that come through. So I think, you know, some things we probably still want across the governor's stats.
Yep. So it'll probably be August
Yeah.
Before we really hear about funding opportunities. And Libby Lasecki-Winner, who works with the HOPE Advisory Board and with the Coordinated Regional Office of Homelessness, I never get that acronym right, Crowe. Um, they, uh, she's, she's tracking all of these things.
Who is?
Libby Lasecki-Winner. She's the, the contract uh, grant writer that's been working with the county uh, on housing issues for the last year and a half.
I mean, that's a significant new investment dollars.
And one of the things we also built into your new contract back in November was to have more opportunities like you do on the federal level to give out state opportunities so that you don't miss anything.
Mm hmm.
Um, so most of the time we will know through something else through and there'll be a grant opportunity at the state level. So they're going to work on trying to be one of them.
Great. For a short session, I think they got, they surprised themselves.
Yes.
Quite a bit. Too short a period of time. Transportation, um, not a lot in the short session, but I think there's a lot of looming uh, you know, for the long session next year. Joint Committee on Transportation listening to her. So doesn't say who those folks are, but uh, have about a dozen of town halls. Uh, there are a couple in our area of into May, into May, Woodburner, Albany. Keep up your mind. Next closest is U of O at the end of June. I assume they take testimony in, in those road shows.
Yeah.
So uh, an opportunity. I think they did something like this before the twenty seventeen session and tried to get a sense what the common needs are. I, I think uh, one of the themes is there's been a at least a modest amount of money for new construction, like Highway twenty safety improvements and new bridges. Not so much on taking care of what we already have. And it's getting more and more obvious that uh, HODOT's budget uh, needs, needs some help, especially on the on the maintenance side, side of things. It's always more exciting to build something new and shiny and look what we did versus, hey, your road doesn't have as many potholes as it used to. But uh, I, I think there's a recognition that more dollars need, need to go to uh, taking care of what we already have. Uh, the Cascade West uh, Area Commission on Transportation, Roger Nyquist and I are have a meeting with Savannah Crawford, uh, early April. Uh, she used to be the, our area manager and now she's a regional. But uh, so we should be pretty familiar with uh, some of our projects and need to come up with fairly short list of uh, priorities to lobby her a little bit on and again, getting ready for the twenty five session and the next uh, HODOT funding cycle. We mentioned earlier, talking, uh, was Andy talked about the correctional facility. Uh, I think uh, we ought to be developing a, a plan. It's going to be maybe twenty twenty seven before we're financially ready to talk to our, talk to the voters. But I think, you know, just like we did last time, got interrupted by the pandemic is lay the groundwork. Do we have the right design? And you mentioned a group that can maybe help with that uh, process. But I, I think we need to be at least moderately uh, active. We have a goal. We desperately need a correctional facility and we're standing up a reserve fund and we're, you know, we, we have different uh, aspects to advance this critical project.
Yeah. It's not designed per se, uh, you know, in the engineering sense of the word, but uh, the the size and the bells and whistles, just how fancy does it need to be? What, what are the essential components? Um, that, that drive cost. Um, and I think that this group can really help with that. It's just a matter of, we really do need to talk timing and strategy. So
There's a sheriff on board.
Yep. And make sure that sheriff's on board. So that's.
Been doing some work, was doing some research in relation to that some topics of our experts in finance and around the state. Um, one of the things that we can do is we can establish that basically do what we're doing with Pers right now. Are you able to assess through payroll or potentially assess through assessment that you establish where you can actually then look at all programs across the county in terms of the contribution to that debt service fund. And so I think what I like that idea is that it enables you to start now. Maybe it's not, obviously we have to but at the same time it starts with the dollars away. But it sets up that opportunity to run the. But it sets up that opportunity to when the pers bonds do go away, if you don't have to continue investing first, you could actually shift that debt service requirement to your current debts if we find. And on top of that, if we do get, as we start to kind of restack our facilities and how that we have the opportunity to be more efficient with those, are we going to be able to sell some? And you can use those resources to add to that debt. So I think that's sort of the model that I've been talking to Debbie so that she can take that on, but okay, to kind of make sure that moves through because I know that's very important to you. And it's 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 really good opportunity to just, again, it doesn't happen overnight, but when those opportunities do present themselves, how do we push a little money away? So and then, you know, before you know it, you're up there if you invest well, if it keeps going well, then we can maybe say, hey, we can issue half debt. And that's it, it's a tip obviously.
Yes.
I I really like that. I like the idea that we're going to save money. I think that's a good message, even if it's $2. I mean, even just start with something, you know? I just, I want to be cautious. So I hear what everyone is saying about we don't want to lose the public's focus. We want people to know that it is a big issue and we still want to address it. I just, my gut is telling me we just have to be really careful with our messaging so that people don't think we're just turning around and rushing back into another bond, you know? And there's been so many people out there that, I mean, it crashed and burned the polls right in the election. So there's a lot of people that I think would, they get a whiff of it and they want to turn around and be critical of it again. So we'll be really careful.
And I want to show us that we're good stores and that we're going to build a new courthouse and we're going to build a crisis center.
Yes.
You know, that'll help with the people as well, that that we can, we can land these projects and get things built.
Right, and that's something we heard, you know, build the, yes, support the children and families mental health, yes, support navigation center, yes, support these other things. So if we can support those other things first, maybe that'll, you know, help voter segment it.
Well, any of this, this is astonishing, in terms of presentation, I'll leave you with 121 million dollars. That is exactly how much money we have right this moment. I'm not talking about our state fund. That is exactly our budget for a multitude of projects. So I guess, to Angel's point, we have an opportunity to really deliver some great things here in the next few years and be able to change about that. But, you know, being good stores of those dollars and it shows and demonstrates that we can do this and do it well. So again, just for you also to recognize the work that has been done. It's sometimes I know it's, I think about, you know, the jail and certainly have that, but what you have done is nothing short of amazing in terms of the amount of dollars. That's a lot of capital projects. So I look forward to talking about that next week.
It's just, and I think people don't understand, like, well, yeah, you guys get money for all this other stuff, why can't you get money for jail? Like, it's frustrating that we can't get the money from, like, we can for the courthouse for jail.
Yeah.
And we bring it up to Washington leaders, I mean, and we're bringing it up to statewide leaders and we have to come up with a system to fund local jails. And I think it's got to be done on the national level. I think that the Department of Justice under the Corrections Department needs to think about this.
It's very difficult.
Along those lines and this can, well, I remember a discussion of sometime in March, Hoffman Construction letting us, giving us a better estimate of cost of the new courthouse. Is that still on track?
I would say probably more April-ish, you know, obviously that the plans are all put together, they're working towards getting that all finalized. So theory last season is, you know, we want to. So obviously we've got, you know, to be able to get it around, we've got to have a lot of those construction contracts. So I gotta believe it's, I mean, the good news is, obviously we have a estimate under what we have resources in summer and we've seen cost escalation actually drop a little bit. So I have to believe that when you're seeing there are resources, but I know that we're on the, you know, what that result is and what. So at this point, yes, I think April-ish, but I'll, I'll.
Well.
Looking at very, very closely.
You mentioned the 121 million of capital construction projects and Mike mentioned in the same sentence that we're doing this in the time of the highest inflation that we've had in decades. So, you know, challenging. Let's see. Had a discussion with Dr. Mike Huntington on Corvallis Clinic, United Health merger. At the League of Women Voters Town Hall, Senator Kilsner Bluen talked about that a little bit and having contact with OHA. I'm not sure if if we can have any influence or should try to have any influence. Definitely affects our community. Towards the end of the conversation with Mike, it was I had the impression he was almost, well, it's kind of a done deal at this point, but just wanted us to be aware. Interesting. Apparently the same outfit, United Health Optum bought Oregon Medical Group in Eugene a couple of years ago. Maybe that didn't go so well. So about 30% of the doctors have quit. They can't say anything bad because they have a non-disclosed agreement or something, but 30% is, things we're working out, I can see five or 10%, you know, some kind of normal turnover, but that's throwing that out there. Do we, as a board, want to do anything or approach it individually?
I wrote a letter as an individual to Oregon Health Authority to and and more narrowly aimed at the fact that right now what Optum was trying to do is invoke an emergency clause so that they do not go through the formal review of criteria for this acquisition. And I don't think that it merits the emergency clause. So slow down, do it right. Let the state do its review. Especially since, again, United Healthcare through one of their other entities. Change Group that is the platform that a lot of medical groups and pharmacies use to communicate with one another. That crashed and burned a couple of weeks ago and it's just now, you know, slowly coming back online and there are other workarounds that the doctor's offices and pharmacies had to put into place because a lot of clinics can't even bill right now for their services because they use this platform. And that's part of what's going on with the Corvallis Clinic, too. They can't bill because this United Healthcare platform is 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 broken. And so, yeah. And then they're offering kind of pennies on the dollar loans to these clinics, which amounts to a tiny fraction of what they are owed from the insurers, but they can't get access to those payments. So it's, it's a nasty situation overall. And anyway, I wrote a letter, I'd be happy to share it. I shared it with with Rachel, I think, and with Maura, just so it's in the record for here for us, but I'd be happy to share it with you. I don't know what the timing is on that decision and, you know, and neither Mike Huntington nor Bruce Thompson knew either, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I did respond, so Dr. Huntington's letter, he had shared a link to testimony that John Santa submitted and I concurred with much of what he said. And so I did forward to that email address, the hcmo.info. Yeah, and just put a little blurb in there about what I supported and then let Mike know.
Good. Yeah.
And I think we literally just got a email from someone asking us about this topic. So.
Yep. It's a major concern in the community. Okay, anything else?
There's a small state fund, a million and a half dollars to help landowners cope with beavers. And I think this would probably fit in with our non-lethal program and haven't had a chance to forget who's running that program currently.
We can, we can also push it out on our social media if it's a great opportunity.
That's all.
Okay, so we already covered the Corvallis Clinic situation. I do need to share with you all a letter that I okayed between meetings to Senators Merkley and Wyden in support of a request from the folks over at the USDA Ag Research Center for Congressional Designated Spending asked to, for their greenhouses, greenhouse infrastructure through their research programs. So that went out last Friday, thanks to Maura, but I would love retroactive approval of supporting that. It's up to, yeah, it's up to them. This is just a support letter for their ask. But with all the storm damage and.
Oh, true.
So addition, in addition to that, I also attended the sustainability fair last week. It was well-attended and useful just to make the rounds and to talk to all the community-based organizations and other partners that the county works with. I did not stay for the program itself. And I am going to the ALC Governor, Government Corolla meeting tonight. Rick Gomburg and Senator Anderson will be there as well as Commissioner Casey Miller from Lincoln County. And I think the sheriff is going to try and show up as well, the Benton County Sheriff. Oh, I have not seen that yet. Okay, okay, awesome. So, and I know that one of the other things that's on the minds of folks out there is the, the CAC, the, not the Community Development CAC, Community Advisory Committee, and standing that up again, having elections, et cetera. I saw the email that was shared that that's in process and there there are some dates being exchanged with the community. So that's great.
I think we've done in Public Works, the contribution for January for them. It's nice if we have someone, when the pressure goes out, especially if we see what the family has done. Because we will have all these out there.
Buy better communication about all of our capital.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, the, on their list of concerns is that they'd like to have an emergency generator as backup for the sewer system, but one that does not get hauled off and kept off-site by the county. So they'd like to have one that is permanently in C2, I think, rather than Yeah, and and water as well that have the same interest. But, you know, these are all issues that I may hear about tonight and may not hear about tonight. The ALC community shared a whole list of issues.
It was great.
Yeah. Okay, that'd be great. Anything, any latest information I have will be helpful. Sure, I can definitely share it. Awesome to the ground.
Gas station.
Yes.
Find funding for a gas station. I don't know many, but I know there's a model where people can basically co-opt it into a like a gas station, but I guess that that will come up tonight as well. Gas.
Yeah.
And our generators. Although if they, well.
The generator brought to be diesel.
Okay, sorry, shared that as we were speaking. I also had a conversation, I think it was maybe two weeks ago now, with Alicia Lucky over at Council of Governments. And the reason I had checked in with her was partly to go to the new office on Ninth Street and just to see him, get a tour and also to take her some materials that I had brought back from Washington DC from the Naco meeting that were relevant to veteran services and to the Stand By Me program that was run out of the Council of Governments. And so it was good to just get an update about how they're doing over there. And I think that the Veteran Service Office in particular is really flourishing in that site. They've got much better meeting space and it's a lot easier for people to meet with the veteran services officers, given the difference in security arrangement in the new building. So the Stand By Me program is also doing really well and it would be great to get a little bit more of a report about that at some point. They have financial counselors embedded in several different organizations that are doing particularly well, working with some of the Latino serving community and with Casa Latinos Niños. And they are excited about that and about a potential expansion even further. They still are struggling to keep kind of the core staffing going in order to keep the program up and running. So if we do have any, you know, ARPA dollars coming forward again, that's something that they would be, they would be very interested in some support. So I just want to keep that front and center that we, we're still kind of helping that tender new program get its feet under it. It sounds like it's just about ready to take off. They've gotten significant grant funding from a couple of other funders in the state like Oregon Community Foundation and they have their first credit union partnership with one of the local credit unions. So they're getting better and better established. Let's see. The a fun thing, I went to see the Corvallis, the production at Corvallis High School of Newsies, the show over the weekend, and it was a fantastic production. I wish it weren't the last weekend because it would be fun to go again. But when I was looking at the program, I realized that all of the choreography was done by Kelly Volkman, and I don't know if that name is familiar to you, but she was a longtime employee of the Health Department and the person that got our Health Navigator program up and going and really launched, you know, as a statewide program as well, training program. And I had no idea that she was a dancer and choreographer and she, the choreography was incredible. So I wish I had seen it soon enough to tell everyone to go see it.
Kurt Wright sent me, you know, probably 10 things to go see it and I just, with our schedule, I couldn't.
Oh, fabulous. And, you know, the productions there are usually very good, but this one was over the top. Last, I know that with respect to the food hub dollars that went to the city of Corvallis, one of the next steps is that the entity that is doing the first phase work is supposed to present to both the Board of Commissioners and to the City Council about their findings and recommendations for moving forward into Phase Two. That's supposed to happen in May. I was wondering whether or not that should be a joint meeting of City Council and Board of Commissioners just so that they could come and present all at once and we could discuss it as a, as a body, rather than having two parallel presentations. This fodder for, for that. And I don't think I have anything else. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. They will be ready with that first phase. They already, they've already had a draft that has been shared with the Economic Development Office at the city and they've gotten feedback and so they'll have a final version. I think part of their, their contract stipulated that they had three different proposed outcomes, all digital, virtual food hub, kind of a small, medium food hub and a big food hub. And I think that, that where they are with the city is trying to just saying that they, they want to concentrate on a couple of alternatives for the small, medium option and not, you know, not go for either of the extremes, which aren't really realistic and wouldn't serve what the community is asking for. But, yeah, so that's coming soon. We should just go further on that. I don't have any, oh, I do just want to mention, I guess, that we have a legislative breakfast this Saturday.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
I just got it started at seven. Nine is fine.
Yeah. And we've had confirmed RSVPs from Senator Anderson and Senator Gilser Bluen. I'm not sure about either Rep. Gomburg or Rep. Rayfield yet. And then I, as luck would have it, am at the government corner at the Corvallis Downtown Library right after that.
Oh, okay. So you'll still be there.
Yes. Yes. But, yeah. Just, it's going to be a lot of, a lot of meeting.
Yes. That's right. I saw that on your Facebook page.
My very, almost inactive Facebook page. And then we have Celebrate Corvallis this Friday night. And I am going to the Humane Society fundraiser on Saturday night. So it's a busy week.
Weekend.
Week, 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 weekend. Yeah. Yeah.
They all blend together.
They do all blend together. So, and I already mentioned the sequential intercept mapping next week. And the other, I think Commissioner Malone, you're also involved. The Community Services Consortium Director Peggy McWire has announced that she is going to be stepping down at the end of the year. They're starting a search or thinking about search. So both Commissioner, I think you said you were interested in helping out with that. I don't know. I'm.
I haven't signed up yet.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah. I, I, I am hoping to be involved with that committee. Yeah. Yes.
Don't get any ideas.
Until recently, it was at the end of next year and now it's the beginning of next year.
Yep. All good. Okay. That is it from my perspective. But we do need to, if you would make a motion about that letter, that would be greatly appreciated.
Move to retroactively approve the letter of support by Commissioner Ozawa to Wyden and Merkley. Supporting the OSU.
USDA Ag Research Centers request.
Yes, that.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with a "aye." Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything under other? Then this meeting is adjourned at 12:05 on the 12th of March.